The light goes on.
It's actually pretty cool.
We're streaming. We're streaming now.
Evening, everybody. How you doing? So today, it's seven o'clock. Today is Wednesday, August 18th. My name is Rob Cagnetta, and this is a meeting of the South Kingstown Rhode Island Board of Review, zoning Board of Review, excuse me. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, our Vice Chairman, Richard Jurzak, Bill Rosen, and, geez, I don't have your name on here, Susan Walsh, excuse me. Also present are Jamie Gorman, the South Kingstown Building Zoning, Building Official, Amy Goines, South Kingstown Legal Counsel, and that's it. The Board is made up of seven people. Five are regular voting members. Five members are required to be present to vote. We have just five here tonight, so tonight all of them will be voting. So applicants are here either for a variance, dimensional, or use, or to seek a special use permit. The Board is a quasi-judicial body created by the South Kingstown Ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe to be in a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless they get carried away, or it's determined not to be relevant. So in the interest of time, please try to be brief and on point. We do our best not to argue and keep things civil, and we try to have our last petition by 10:00, which I don't think will be a problem tonight. When your petition is called, please come forward and step up to the podium and clearly state your name and spell it for the record. Speak clearly so we can all hear you and make sure you speak into the microphone. It's not one of those omnidirectional, you can talk anywhere around it, so you've got to talk right into it. We try to let everyone speak unless, oh, I told you all that already. We do our best, okay, you even said that. So when your petition is called, all right. All right, so you'll be then asked to take an oath to tell the truth, and then you can present your petition along with any other witnesses to testify in your support. The Board will then ask you or your witnesses questions after the petitioner has presented their testimony. Anyone else with questions about the application or wanting to support or oppose the petition will then be asked to step forward. They will identify themselves, be sworn in, and present their testimony, which may be followed up by questions by the Board. Please do not ask any direct questioners, questions to the petitioner or any other witnesses. Ask them to us, and then we'll direct them to the appropriate party. So we'll ask the, we'll allow the petitioner to answer any questions raised by the audience and/or respond to any comments after the comment period. After hearing all the testimony and before a vote is taken, Board members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. So you are aware, variances or special use permits are required to have four of five voting members to vote in favor of the petition for granting of the requested relief. We're going to ask a lot of questions, and there's a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. There are rules to follow per the South Kingstown's zoning ordinance. You must give testimony to support certain facts to allow your request to move forward, or to be approved, rather. Tonight, we have dimensional variances and a special use permit on the agenda. Or maybe not. We do, yes. For variances, you must offer to the Board setting the fourth, the following, that your hardship is due to unique characteristics of the subject land or structure, and this is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. The hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part. The granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. The relief requested is the least relief necessary. And then you also must show that your hardship to be suffered if the variance is not granted will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. For a special use permit, you must present the following, that your special use permit that you're requesting is specifically authorized by the zoning ordinance. So somewhere in the zoning ordinance, this has to be listed in order for us to grant it. And you probably wouldn't have made it this far if that was the case. A special use permit also requires that you meet all the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance to authorize such special use, and that granting of the special use permit will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. If you have any questions as we go along, please feel free to ask. But today, we're going to start with hearing some folks that we didn't get a chance to last time. So first, we have the continuation for the petition of Jason and Joan Greer of 487 Pond Street in Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows, that the applicant is seeking to construct an 18-foot-by-24-foot detached garage located 34 feet from the property line. The required yard setback is 50 feet. A relief of 16 feet is requested. The lot size is 10.21 acres. The dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 401. Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, Section 503.1. Accessory Structures and Section 907 are standards of belief. Owner of the property is Jason and Joan Greer, for premises located at 487 Pond Street, South Kingstown. Accessory map 63-3, Lot 1, and is zoned R80. And for this application, we have the application that's signed and dated June 11th, 2021. The owner authorized, signed, and notarized June 11th, 2021. A site plan, one page, dated June 11th, 2021. Floor plan is one page of the same date. Elevations, one page of the same date. Proposed ISDS alteration, one page, prepared and stamped by Peter Alviti Jr., an engineer of Hudson Place Associate, dated October 2005. 200-foot radius map and butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings and notarized affidavit of mailing. And then I believe there are two correspondences. One from Mark Goldberg, the President of Salt Pond Estates, received on July 21st, 2021. And then Mr. Gorman's going to read the other correspondence into the record.
That's actually the only correspondence, Chair.
Oh, that is? Oh, so the President of Salt Pond is the only correspondence?
Correct.
So she thought that. Do you want to read it in for me then?
Sure.
Sorry, I didn't realize it was only one.
Email from Mark Goldberg, Tuesday, July 20th, to Jessica Spence. Dear Mr. Gorman, lacking additional information regarding stormwater management, design, landscaping, impact on Spartina Cove's adjacent path to Pond Street, et cetera. We cannot say that we support the structure proposed. However, on a simple dimensional basis, Salt Pond Estates, Inc. does not oppose the request. The variance requested seems reasonable. Sincerely, Mark Goldberg, President, Salt Pond Estates.
Okay. Okay, and you are?
Jason Greer.
Okay, can you please spell your name, please?
Actually, I'm going to take my mask off.
You're okay.
I'm fully vaccinated, so.
Thank you.
Last name is Greer, G-R-E-A-R.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Okay, so we're proposing to build an 18-by-24-foot garage using a kit barn type of structure. And the reason for the variance request is because of the nature of the land, you'll see that we actually have 10 acres there, and the obvious question is, well, why don't we have room to build it behind the house? It's because the house, right from the very front, there's a, the house itself is built on a flat area, and then the house is actually built on the backside of a hill that drops down immediately. So the elevation above mean sea level is 35 feet, but it drops down to a wetland, a freshwater wetland, right behind the house. So there's a steep grade that kind of runs parallel roughly to the back of the house, straight back, and then most of the 10 acres is red maple swamp. So what we're trying to do is build so that we can access the structure from the driveway and use it as a garage, but, you know, ideally, it would be closer to the street. But recognizing the setback requirements, we're trying to push it back as far as we can without having the entire structure be out over the hill. Because with the, with the four-foot frost walls and then the four to six feet above elevation that we would be required to go to reach the height of the driveway, we'd end up with, you know, 10 to 12 feet of concrete wall and all the necessary backfill or whatever would have to be done with that foundation. So in, so in addition to staying away from putting the entire structure behind that hill, we're also trying to stay as far away from the wetlands as we can, which are, I'm forgetting now, it's on the plot map, but pretty far away, but I don't know yet whether that's going to become an issue with CRMC review, which I haven't sought yet. So, let's see, what else? Most of the structure would be on top of what is already paved driveway, so the impact on impervious surface is minimal, like maybe the size of a car. That might address the comment from, from the letter that was put in. I don't know if that's relevant to this meeting, but just thought I would, would throw that in there. So the structure itself is basically referred to as a one-and-a-half-story garage with some flexibility in the height of the corner posts in order to make sure that we can stay under the 20-foot height requirement for that R80 zone. And so what, the plan will be to engage with the kit company that then prepares the building plans, but we really won't know the final grade until the foundation is in. And I've already confirmed with them that they have flexibility in the design of the structure of the building to make sure that we can stay underneath that 20-foot height requirement. See, I had another note to myself here. Yeah, so it's, it basically is a result of that unique character of the land, you know, despite the fact that we have 10 acres, the topography is what the challenge is for us with this, with this property. And, you know, we're trying to seek that, that balance and do the least necessary, ask for the least amount of, of relief necessary to still be able to access the, the main floor of the building from the driveway to be able to park in there and park my boat in there and that kind of thing, so.
And who did the plans for you?
Oh, so that was a couple of clarifications about the plans. This last page, the one you mentioned that is stamped by an engineer, I only threw, I added that in there because it shows the, the location of the building, where the lot lines are, the setbacks and whatnot, but the structure that was proposed in that drawing was never built. That was part of an application before we bought the house to build an accessory structure, a pretty large one, and they needed, even though our septic system is already built for four bedrooms, which is bigger than what we have, we have a three-bedroom house, they still needed this ISDS approval, I guess, and that's why that application was prepared. So I just added that into the application as background information. So, and, and I felt that that was important because I'm the one that drew the other plans, and I'm not a certified engineer or a surveyor. So, but I used, you know, my GPS skills, I have a PhD in spatial ecology, which, you know, is what, you know, made it possible for me to, to put these drawings together is just having that skill with the, you know, the scaling and whatnot. But I worked from that, that last page that I included in the application in order to develop this, and then in addition, aerial photography, the GIS layer for the, that the town has for, for lots, lot lines and whatnot.
I mean, it's basically just making sure that the placement of it is, will be verified in the field.
Yeah. So the, there is one, there is a monument, a granite monument at the corner of the property at the southeast corner. Let's see which drawing that's shown on. Yeah, on the drawing entitled Site Plan. You see my note there, survey monument. There is a granite corner post right there, which was probably surveyed because that side of the property is a national grid right-of-way. That's probably why that monument was put in there.
So you're relatively confident that, you know, post-construction, you're going to be within your.
Yes.
Setback here.
So what I did is I, I went from that monument, the frontage that we have is 200 feet, measured that down, and then took the angle off of the drawing, measured that back. And I'm actually pretty conservative on where these, where I've drawn the lines to, you know, to be sure that there's no chance that I'm crossing into the setback, the side lot setback, and the, and the front setback.
Mr. Gorman, that's all right. That's good enough for you. Do you need to have anything identified on the, on the site, just to make sure that he's?
The applicant will need to prepare a soil erosion plan, which can be done by a surveyor and engineer as well to verify that he is indeed, in fact, putting the foundation where he's proposing on that plan.
Okay.
Which I do plan to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Board members, questions?
Sir, with the 16-foot front yard variance, are you going to have enough space for a turnaround? Because it's dangerous as hell there if you back out.
Yeah, we have a, it's a pretty big, I don't know if you can see on the plan there how the driveway, I have to actually face the direction that the driveway is, I believe it's, yeah, it goes like this, it goes in and then turns around like that. It's a pretty big, wide driveway.
My only concern is you're going to have a turnaround, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for, believe me, Joan is making sure of that because she has to back out of the garage every day and that kind of thing. So, and right now, I move a boat in and out of that driveway, and there's, right now there's four cars in the driveway because my son is still at home and that kind of thing, so it is a little tight, but we're, we're covering that. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Mr. Rosen?
Yes, and I'm going to keep my mask on, so I might have to speak a little louder.
That's okay.
Okay. On the drawing, it says that there's going to be a garage there, and it implies that there's going to be a bedroom.
I'm sorry?
It implies there's going to be a bedroom above the garage. That's, that's been taken off, according to.
So you might be looking at the.
Yeah, I am.
That was the structure that was never built, and this doesn't have any relationship to that structure. I only included this as additional background for the.
I understand that, but you did admit, you did give us the drawing, so I want to ask some questions about it, okay? And it does say there's going to be a bedroom, but I want to make sure, what's above the garage? And it's one-and-a-half stories, so there's a half a story up there. Is it just going to be for some purpose?
Kayaks, it's not going to be, there's going to be end windows just for ventilation, but the building's not going to be insulated. The main purpose of the upstairs space is just to store kayaks and fishing equipment.
Okay, and.
There's, it's no living space, there's no plumbing to the building.
Okay. Is the positioning of the garage essentially going to be the same as the positioning on this drawing?
No, that building, well, no, that building is further back, and they, what they had was a full driveway going from the front.
Step forward to the microphone.
Sorry about that. Going from the front.
Uh huh.
I have to talk with my hands, sorry. Going from the front, down the hill, and around to the bottom sort of basement level of that proposed building, just massively, a massive disturbance to that entire hillside that building would have been, which is why we never pursued it. Also, we don't need, we don't need an extra apartment on our property. My last child is going off to college this year, it's just my wife and me. We plan to stay. So the, I don't intend for that drawing that you're pointing to there to represent the location of the new structure. If you look at the site plan, you'll see that the new structure crosses into the setback, the front setback, whereas on that old site plan.
Uh huh.
It's, the entire structure is behind the setback by a good number of feet, probably 20 feet.
Is the garage still going to be north of the house?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the approximate location is there, but the exact position in relation to the setbacks is a little bit different.
And the septic system and the, and the leaching field, they're already installed.
Yep, yep, nothing new there.
And there, are their positions shown on this drawing correctly?
Not on my site, well, let's see, do I have them on? Oh, yeah, yeah, I do have them on the site plan.
Okay.
And that's based on that older drawing.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board members, questions? Ms. Walsh?
I don't know if I'm on, it's got a red light, but.
Red light is what should be it.
It's good.
Just get it close to your face.
Yeah, I went out by the site, and it's obvious, driving by it, that there is a dramatic.
Yeah.
Fall off, and I saw where you had your boat and various other things.
Kayaks.
I assumed that was where this was going to be positioned from the drawing.
So the boat that's sitting there now is actually on the south side of, so the driveway goes from east to west and then curves toward the house. This structure is going to be sort of along the north edge of the driveway. The boat that you saw in the front yard is actually on the south side of the driveway. But all of that, all that stuff that's now cluttering my front yard is intended to go into this building.
And the building itself is a kit, so it minimizes the, any construction.
On-site construction, other than the, the foundation is going to be, you know, the biggest part, but the kit itself comes in, most of the structure up through, at least the rafters, is completed within one day. And then the rest of it is up to me to, you know, keep contractors on hand to finish up the roofing and whatnot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Daniels, nothing? Okay. Anything to add?
Not that I can think of.
Okay.
But thank you for your time. Thanks for considering the application, I appreciate it.
No problem, we'll see if there's anybody out there that wants to. Is there anyone that wants to speak for or against this petition? No? Okay. Board members, what are you thinking? Is there any, anybody have any issues or concerns? No? Someone want to make a motion?
Well, since I ask the most questions, I'll.
I want to get the mic closer to the, to yourself, just to.
Okay, the motion is to approve the petition of Jason and, wait a second, let me get it here, Jason and Joan Greer. Mr. Jason Greer was the only speaker for against the petition. Let's see, and as a consequence, oh, you've already put in the materials that have been.
All the documents are in, yeah.
Okay, so this is fairly straightforward. The Board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is not due to the unique characte, let me get my glasses so I can read what the heck I'm reading, not, is not due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant, excepting those physical disabilities addressed in 452430 parentheses 16. And the reason mainly that this, that this is nonconforming a lot, and the land slopes off drastically from the house and where the garage will be, and so it would be very detrimental to the construction of this pre-built garage, partially pre-built garage, to bring it in, have a foundation that was onerous in the sense that it would be very, very tall, and you'd have to backfill it with great difficulty. And so for that reason, I think that it is, it is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land. The Board finds that the hardship is the result, is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain, mainly because he's going to essentially construct the garage on his own, and so, and he's not going to have anything like an apartment above the garage, and so he's not, obviously not going to gain any financially, he's going to have to build the foundation and pay for the foundation himself. The Board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based, because essentially, he's just putting in a garage so that he can store his car and various other insundry materials that he needs for enjoying his property. The Board finds that the relief to be granted is not, is the least relief necessary, because as I've stated previously, he's essentially paying this on his own, and he needs to place the garage in the position that he's going to have it, mainly because of the fall off of the land. The Board finds that the hardship. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, because it will set him back considerable dollars in the end. As a result, I move approval of this petition.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Rosen. I thought my mic on. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Rosen.
Aye.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
Mr. Gerzak?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good luck.
Anybody? Are you all set?
Yes, you are all set, you don't need to hang around.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Unless you want it.
Yeah.
You enjoyed it.
So, next is the continuation of the petition of Maha Boys Properties Incorporated, 26 Pearl Street of Cortlandt, New York, 13045, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to replace the existing seasonal trailer of 256 square feet with a new trailer of 300 square feet. The trailer will not be located any closer to neighboring units, the lot size is 7.67 acres. Special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section 203, special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification, section 608 of our coastal community overlay district, and section 907, our standards of relief. Owner of the trailer, 689A Succotash Road, is Maha Boys Properties, Inc., on property owned by Village at Potter's Pond LLC, located at South Kingston Assessor's Map 87-3, Lot 55-56, and is zoned CW. For this application, we have, the application is signed and dated June 16, 2021, owner authorization signed and notarized May 19, 2021, proposed site plan, one page, existing site plan, one page, floor plan, one page, and then a 200-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and a notarized affidavit of mailing. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeff Caffrey, I'm an attorney with the firm of Resnick &amp; Caffrey, offices at 300 Senegal Road in Warwick.
Great.
I'm here on behalf of your applicant, Maha Boys Properties, Inc. With me this evening is Arthur and Louise Maha, which are the principals of Maha Properties, as well as Brad LaFontaine, President of Village at Potter Pond LLC. As you indicated before the board this evening, it's a petition for a special use permit under your coastal community overlay district requirements. I have to say that we worked pretty closely with Jamie and the planning department, trying to come up with a workable plan that would get his backing and his recommendation going forward. The current residence that is there is a park model, a recreational vehicle, and it's eight feet by 30 feet, and it contains a three-foot by 12-foot bumpout, so it actually, contrary to what's in the application, it's actually the equivalent of about 279 square feet. What we're looking for today is approval for installation of a 12 by 25 square foot, again, recreational vehicle. Because of the nuances of your coastal community overlay district, because we're looking for greater than a 25% increase in the structure that existed as of the date of the enactment of the ordinance, namely 2000, we need to get a special use permit under section 203. And again, we're restricted to a 50% increase of the gross living footage allowance based upon what was there in 2000. It's my understanding, based upon my conversations with Jamie, that as of 2000, the square footage was approximately 200 square feet, hence the request for a 300-square-foot recreational vehicle before the board this evening. At this point in time, unless you have any questions, to me, I'd like to call up the applicant, Arthur Maha, and he can certainly explain his mindset in coming up with the proposal that's before you this evening.
Sounds great, have him go. Please state and spell your name, please.
Arthur Maha, M.A.H.A.R.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Great. Go ahead.
Mr. Maha, can you explain to the board how long you've lived at the park?
Approximately two years.
Okay, and are you predominantly seasonal, or have you been staying a year round?
Seasonal, at the point with looking to spend much more time in the winter.
Okay, so the property, can anybody hear me fine without the microphone?
We can hear you fine, but you might wanna speak into it, so we can hear on the minutes and streaming.
So, the property that you purchased in 2019 can take the 2017 park model approximately 279 square feet, can you explain to the board why it is that you've decided you need a larger model?
Not only, when we first petitioned the Village of Potter's Pond, we asked for a 399 square foot park model, and the main reason for that was because it had a laundry room, which for us is very important. And in speaking with Jamie, he was very gracious, and in talks on the phone, and he told us that by rule, we could only go, increase 50%, and that is what we're trying to do, because we wanna spend, we have three sons in this area, and one in New York City who can visit a lot, and five grandchildren, so we wanna be able to come down in the fall and winter and be comfortable. Thank you.
Just one, one further question. I noticed on the way that you've got the proposed model home being located, it's at a slightly different angle than which is presently located. Can you explain to the board the rationale behind how it will be situated?
When we petitioned the board, the board was, told us that they staked out the exact area where this new place would go, and according to the board, which Brad can talk about, that everything is in the same proximity from other buildings that adjoin our property. Is that what you wanted?
So, it would be safe to say that you're not encroaching any further upon any of the neighboring properties?
Not at all, not at all, no.
Okay. I have nothing further for this witness, if the board has any questions.
Board members, any questions for this witness? Hang on. Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't see a letter per se from your board that gives you, that's given you the authorization to go ahead. Can you, can you testify that the board, you've spoken with your board? And the board has given you the-
Yes, they have, yes. I believe Jamie has that letter.
I do.
Is it, is it in file? I didn't necessarily see it, but-
I think the owner authorization was signed by the president, but I don't have an actual letter, I don't believe that's important.
Okay, I noticed that signature, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Board members, any other questions for the witness? Nope. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to call Brad LaFontaine, the president of the Village of Potter Pond, to testify as well.
I'm Brad LaFontaine, from the Village of Potter's Pond, I'm the president of the LLC. My name is Brad, B.R.A.D.L.A.F.O.N.T.A.I.N.E.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Great. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. LaFontaine, on behalf of the executive board of the Village of Potter Pond, you have approved the application that's before the board this evening?
We have approved this, this letter we had sent in, and Jamie has it, and we did approve it. The board has voted on it, and they voted yes.
And how long you've been the president of the Village of Potter Pond?
I've been the president at Village of Potter's Pond since 2016, we bought the place in 2015.
So, in the six years that you've been a member of the Village of Potter Pond, I'm sure you've become familiar with the conditions of the, of the park?
I have, pretty much anything that goes on has to go through the board, so I'm well aware of anything that needs to be done there, gets done.
Can you explain for the benefit of the board whether or not the proposed use in front of the board this evening by Maha Properties would be compatible with the existing conditions at Village of Potter Pond?
The board looked at it and took good consideration in it, and thought that what Mr. Maha would like to do would actually fit better than what it's there now, it's actually a, like almost a mobile trailer instead of a park model, so we thought that it would fit much better compared to everybody else's places surrounding.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further question for this witness, if the board has any questions.
Any board members' questions to Mr. LaFontaine? Nope? Great, thank you.
I do, wait a second.
Mr. Rosen?
Yeah. Are there other mobile homes in there? When I was there, I noticed there's lots of cottages, which are very nice, by the way, but I only saw this one mobile home there.
You know, the place has really come around, and everybody's fixed up their places, but there is a lot of park models, and they are a lot of stick builds, it's a combination of both, of what's there. So, yes, there is a lot of park models. As far as that mobile home that you're talking about, that Mr. Maha wants to change, that is one of the only ones there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaFontaine.
I have nothing further, if there are any questions.
Okay, great. Board members, any questions of the witnesses, or? Nope? Thank you. Anyone out there wish to speak on behalf or in opposition to this petition? Nope? Board members, any thoughts? Objections? Seems to fit right in, they seem to be correcting some of the orientation of things, and so doesn't seem to be much of an issue. Okay, go for it.
I move the approval of the petition of the Maha Boys Properties. The property is located in the Village of Potter's Pond, it is zoned CW, that's the coastal community overlay district, Assessor's Map 87-3, Lot 556. The application and the appropriate documentation has been entered into the record by the chairman, and the representatives for the applicant testified, Mr. Maha testified, and indicated that they wish to replace the existing older mobile-type unit with a newer-style, park-style unit. And Mr. Brad LaFontaine also testified, he's the president of the association, the association has looked over the request, has no problem with it, and approves it. There was no one here to speak in opposition, opposition to the request. I indicated that the records were properly entered into the record, including a site plan, and the other documents that the chairman has previously identified. The board finds that the special use is specifically authorized by this ordinance, because subsection 20, section 203, and section 608, the coastal community overlay district, provide for a special use permit. Standards of relief under section 907 have been met, as I will outline in the motion. The board finds that the special use meets all the criteria set forth in a subsection of this ordinance, authorizing special use, because once again, the applicant has testified that they are wanting to replace an older unit and establish a park-style unit within this community, which has a number of those particular style homes in the area currently. The board finds that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance, or the comprehensive plan of the town. The board has considered whether or not satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been or will be made concerning, but not limited to the following matters where applicable. There is no issue with ingress and egress to the lot, because the new unit will basically be in the same location, it'll be the same distance from existing buildings. There's no issue with off-street parking and loading, no issue with trash storage or delivery. Utilities, although it was not testified to, I believe, would be the same utilities that exist with the current, with the current unit. There's no issue with screening and buffering, once again, because the board has, the board of the property has located, has indicated, they have no issue with where the location of the, of the park-style unit will go. There are no other, no other criteria that need to be resolved with regard to the special, special use permit, and the general compatibility is the same as in, same or budding zoning districts, because once again, this is a coastal community overlay district, it is a highly concentrated community, and this applicant will certainly improve the conditions within that piece of property. And with that, I move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Walsh? Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Gerzak?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Nicole Van Der Slice. This is the continuation of the petition of Nicole Van Der Slice of 4615 Fir Tree Lane in Sparks, Nevada, 89436, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to replace an existing seasonal cottage of 576 square feet with a new cottage of 720 square feet, and attached deck of 200 square feet. The dimension between adjacent cottages will be a minimum of 20 feet. The lot size is 50.2 acres. Special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section 203, which is a special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification, section 608, which is the coastal community overlay district, and section 907, our standards of relief. The owner of the cottage 18E3 is Nicole Louise Van Der Slice, on property owned by Matunik Beach Properties, Inc., located at 240 Cards Pond Road, South Kingston, Assessor's Map 92-1, Lot 9-205, and is zoned R200. For this application, we have the application signed and done, the owner authorization signed and notarized June 29, 2021, owner authorization form signed and notarized June 14, 2021, owner authorization form signed and notarized June 29, 2021, architectural plans of A0.0, A1.0, A2.0, A3.0, prepared by Urbain Construction and dated June 14, 2021, 200-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing, and a correspondence from Nicole Van Der Slice, authorization letter received 7/19/21, and that letter- That letter is essentially, what is that letter doing? I don't have it right. Is it granting you the authority to speak on her behalf? Is that it? Ah, thank you so much, sir. This is the July 11 correspondence, Tumet Make Concern, please accept this letter as written authorization at J. Moon. Eric Gooding, Craig Gooding, and to act on my behalf regarding the planning, demolition, and construction of my cabin at Roy Carpenter's Beach, 240 Cards Pond Road, 18E3. Please feel free to contact me at the phone number listed, and if there's any questions or concerns, sincerely Nicole Van Der Slice. So, thank you, and you are, sir.
I am J. Moon, J.A.Y.M.O.O.N., I'm representing Nicole tonight for Urbain Construction, we're a design-build firm, taking care of designing and building.
And we don't need to have this as evidence, it's in the record?
We have that in the record, yes.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Moon, go ahead.
Of course. So, we have a 70-year-old cabin down at Roy Carpenter's, generational shift here, her father was taking care of it, now Nicole is. It's very outdated, it's time for, time for replacement, so going through, we see that- So going through, we see that the ordinance does allow us an in-kind replacement, up to 150 square feet of increase in size, as well as a 200-square-foot deck. So given all the requirements of the ordinance, the design was put together inside of those.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what's your role?
I apologize, I'm the project manager and also the designer.
Okay, so I should swear you in. So, Mr. Moon, just please state your name, or spell your name for us, please?
J.S.O.N.M.O.O.N.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and everything you said already was the truth and nothing but the truth?
It was.
So the plans, as you say, you're staying under the 150 square feet. All the other criteria set forth in the... Our specific ordinance for the coastal, no use of loft space or second floor?
We have storage on the second floor. You'll see that there's a hatch in the corridor, but a very, very low head height there. You know, we went with a very low slope roof, so it's stored strictly.
Okay. Okay, board members, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, one of my usual observations, I guess, I don't see a specific site plan that shows me the actual structure. I don't see that. May I see it?
Of course.
Is that part of the record?
Oh, yeah, this...
That's not a specific site plan because it doesn't show distances between the adjoining units.
Okay.
And it doesn't show the roadway.
These were just for my notes tonight. But yes, sir, the site plan does call out...
The question was regarding the minimum distances, and that would seem to answer it. I couldn't see that on my copy.
Understood.
Yeah, and they've stated also that you stated that you're getting no closer than the 20 feet?
Exactly.
Okay. Do you need something more accurate than what was provided in the plans here in terms of location?
Provided, it's no closer than 15 feet. That'll be the closest, but if...
So you don't need a specific placement as to the building, per se?
I would say if you can describe maybe how many feet off the road it would be, would be helpful, but using...
And we certainly can. So what we're doing with the facade of the building in terms of the setback from the road is exactly the same. We're in exactly the same spot, and it's roughly seven and a half feet. In terms of the rest of the building, the width of the building is actually increasing a little less than four feet. We're going about 1'9" in either direction. And so we have, I believe it's 22 and a... 22 and change on one side and 26 and change on the other side. So we're increasing 1'9" both directions, so we're well under the required 15 feet each building and maintaining exactly the same distance from the road.
Is that enough for you?
That's acceptable for us, yes.
Mr. Daniels? Yep. Okay.
So what will the distances be between the two buildings, the building?
They will be... So that has not been field verified. I don't know the exact dimensions. I can tell you they are over 20 feet. If I had to guess, I would say about 21 and a half and about 22 and a half, something around there.
Ms. Walsh?
Now, these are informational. By the lot specifications, you have ETR. What does that stand?
Existing to remain.
Excuse me?
Existing to remain.
Existing to remain. So you're not... You don't really have any need for variance, other than the back where it's going to be extended?
Actually, no, we're not actually even seeking the variance. This is just special use permit, just because the ordinance requires it.
It's going to be longer towards the neighbor in the back?
Um, yes and no. The way the existing structure is built, we have an existing building, we have a handful of... There are actually three kind of storage containments, let's say, for lack of a better term, that have been built onto the building. And then there are a handful of portable storage units that are tucked up against the deck, right? You know how Roy Carpenter's is?
I drove out there.
Okay, fair enough. So our footprint is actually exactly what she has, given those add-ons, exactly. Right?
Yeah, because I saw there was a picnic table between the back neighbor.
Right.
It was really... It seemed close.
It's tight, right. And so if you saw that kind of rubber-made storage unit that's on the back of her deck, that's exactly where our deck's going to stop.
And then the other quick question, Mr. Chairman. With the coastal overlay communities, do you have to get the neighbors' comments? Or, I mean, do you have to send out something to the neighbors?
Susan, anything that comes before the zoning board is a public hearing with a butters notice, so any variance request or special use permit application will have a butter notice sent out.
And I saw that, I think that was sent out in the checklist.
It was.
We haven't gotten any responses, Mr. Gorman?
They wouldn't be obligated to respond, but just so everyone's aware, the other cottage owners wouldn't be notified. It would be the property owners surrounding this lot.
Oh, so the actual neighbors don't really?
Cottage neighbors, no, they wouldn't be notified?
Yes, Susan, the practice is and the legal requirement is that notice be sent out to the landowner.
Or neighbors.
And then whatever procedures the landowner, if it's a situation like this one, has for notification, I think Carpenter is right, it's probably informal.
Yeah, they're all in the same situation. They're all very close.
I can tell you at least anecdotally, as both the project manager and the designer, the neighbors are very involved. They contact us regularly with suggestions. So, yeah, everyone's on board.
Oh, I... It's a very... Like the other area, it's a very nice area.
Yeah, it's a tight-knit community.
Thank you, I have no more questions.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Yeah, Mr. Jurzak?
Yeah, I'm just a little bit confused and only... I don't know, maybe I'm missing something here. Amy, it's not 150, is it? Isn't it 1.5 times the existing? It's not 150 square feet.
Well, it's the lesser... If it's 150 square feet or 50% of the existing, whichever is less.
Or is the lesser of?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other board members' questions? Okay. Anyone out there care? Nope, okay. Thank you very much. Any thoughts, concerns, motions? No concerns? We'd like to throw this one. Okay. Mr. Daniels, thank you.
Motion to approve the petition of Nicole Van Der Slice, Sparks, Nevada, for a special use permit. Under the zoning ordinance, the property is located Assessors Map 92-1, Lot 9205, and is zoned R200, and is owned by Matunik Beach Properties, located 240 Cards Road. The chairman read the application and the associated documents into the record, and the applicant for the representative spoke, and I'm sorry I didn't write his name down, and somebody will give me that.
Oh, Mr. Moon.
Mr. Moon? What is it? Mr. Moon, all right. Mr. Moon spoke on behalf of the applicants in support of the request. There was no opposition to this request. And the board finds that the special use is specifically authorized by this ordinance under section 203 for addition and enlargement and expansion or intensification, and under section 608, which is the coastal community overlay district, and section 907, standards of relief. This particular application involves the expansion, actually a replacing of an existing seasonal cottage of 576 square feet with a cottage of 720 square feet, which is within the requirement for enlargement in this district. However, special use permit is required because they're in a coastal community. The board finds that the special use meets all the criteria set forth in a subsection of this ordinance, authorizing special use because, once again, it is required under the coastal overlay district, and the testimony and the documentation supports that the proposed structure will be within the limit for expansion and will not exceed the dimensions between existing buildings, which is an important criteria for fire prevention and safety prevention in that particular piece of property. The board finds that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town, once again, because this is a high-residence, highly area in which there are a number of cottages, a number of homes, and this is certainly in keeping with the current layout on that particular property with regard to multiple homes. There's no issue with ingress and egress to the lot because we're using the same... The applicant will be using the same piece of property and has testified that the minimum distances will be maintained between structures. There is no issue with off-street parking, there is no issue with trash storage or delivery. Utilities will be the same as exist, and there are no further conditions. There's certainly general compatibility with the lots in the same zoning district because, once again, they're all small lots on one... All small buildings, I should say, on one specific lot. No conditions, and therefore I move approval.
Motion is made by Mr. Daniels. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moon, have a good night. Okay, next, we have the petition of Antonio Loure, of 14 Second Street, Hudson, Mass. 01749, for a special use permit. Under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking to construct a 6'9" by 22-foot addition to the existing seasonal cottage. The required separation between the adjacent cottages will be in compliance with the zoning regulations. The lot size is 50.2 acres. The special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section 203, which is the special use permit for addition, enlargement, and expansion or intensification, and section 608, our coastal community overlay district, and section 907, our standards of relief. Owners of the cottage of 4W1 is Antonio and Ziera?
Zaria.
Zaria. Loure on property owned by Matunik Beach Properties, Inc., located 240 Cards Pond Road, South Kingston, Assessors Map 92-1, Lot 9-254, and is zoned R200. Jeez. The four documents, we have the application signed and dated July 8, 2021. Owner authorization signed and notarized, June 24, 2021. Proposed addition, which is A100 and A200, dated June 28, 2021. A site plan of one page, 200-foot radius map, and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. And who is here tonight? Who are you, sir?
Antonio Loure.
Spell that.
L-O-U-R-E.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Loure, please, go ahead, tell us what you'd like to do.
I've been there for almost 20 years, love the place. The issue I'm having is the family. First, it was fine, a couple blow-up beds here and there, and I could fit the grandkids. But the grandkids are getting older, and they visit. Both my son and daughter live out of state, so they don't... They come down for a week or so. But I think... I believe it's time to put additions, very small, just going to allow me to put a couple bunks in there, and as they get older, they'll have a little bit of privacy versus sleeping in the middle of the floor. So I'm hoping you, board, would be kind enough to grant me now permission. I have worked with Mr. Gordon, and he's been very, very helpful. So that's all I can ask, I guess.
And it seems like you're putting your addition towards the road?
Yes.
So we don't have any problem of restricting any movement or traffic?
No, it's still going to be... It's 13 feet off the road, minus seven, so you still got seven, six feet.
Yep.
Off the road.
It says here about 7'3".
Yeah, some... Right, and in the back, because of Roy Carpets, the back, it's 14-something. So the house is built on an angle, so even if they came around the corner...
Yep.
There's another foot there. So one... The front of the building will have seven, yeah, six-something, six and a couple inches. The back will have some, seven and a half...
Okay.
...off the road, the way the house is built.
Board members, any questions? Well, did well. Nobody has any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Yes, Ms. Walsh?
It's informational. So the cottage is already up on pilings?
Yes.
So you're just going to add one piling for the addition?
Actually, I believe it's four.
Oh, so you are adding?
Well, you have to add four pilings because 22 feet long, I believe that's what the plant calls for, to support it. And, you know, in whatever Mr. Gordon requires, I will work.
So you've already kind of...
Yes.
Run it by the...
Yes, I did. That was my first step, was come in and speak with them and see, hey, what can I do here? This is all you can do, if you're granted the permission.
And thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Loure? Okay, thank you. You gentlemen have anything to say in behalf of this petition? Okay. Anybody have any thoughts or want to help Mr. Loure put on addition? Make a petition to...
Well...
You want to roll?
I guess I'm on a roll, right?
You know, clear your throat, you're ready to go.
Sorry about that. And he wishes to construct a 6'9" by 22" addition to the existing seasonal cottage. He has some grown children and grandchildren, I assume, and wants to add on to the existing cottage. So the... Mr. Loure spoke on behalf of himself and indicated to the board that the proper spacing between units will be maintained. All the documentation and the application was in order and was entered into the record and read into the record previously by the chairman. I will note also that the petition was signed by Ms. Thorson, who I believe is one of the owners of Matunik Beach Properties. So with that signature, we can assume that the Matunik Beach Properties grants approval of this request by the applicant. There was no one speaking in opposition to the request, and the special use permit is required under section 203 for addition or enlargement of existing properties in the section 608 coastal community overlay district, and section 907 specifies the standards of relief. So the request by the applicant is permitted under the ordinance with this special use permit. The board finds that the special use is specifically authorized by this ordinance, once again, because section 203 and 608 do permit it with the approval of special use permit. The board finds that the special use meets all the criteria set forth in a subsection of the ordinance, once again, because the ordinance is specific and applies to a special permit that is required in the... permit that is required in the community overlay district, and the applicant has successfully entered into the record the requirements for this permit. The permit will certainly not alter the general character of the surrounding area because once again, is it a, is a high-intensity cottage-type community on a 50-acre lot, and it is certainly within the intent and purpose of this ordinance and the comprehensive community plan of the town. The Board has considered whether or not satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been made, limited to the following matters where applicable. Ingress and egress will not change. There will be one reduction in the frontage on, it looks like, the west side between the edge of the road from 14.6 feet to 7.3 feet. But the distances between existing units, which is very important for fire and safety, will be maintained. There's no issue with off-street parking, there is no issue with traffic, storage, or delivery. Utilities will remain the same since this is simply an addition to existing property. And there's nothing else required to meet the conditions for a special use permit. And with that, I would move the approval of this special use permit for Mr. Loure.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosen. Any discussion? Nope. Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good luck. Keep that family small, you don't have much more space to go there. That's right. Yeah, keep them out of there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, last, we have the petition of Lucas Hearn of 708 South Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows: The applicant is seeking to construct two additions on the south side of the existing single-family dwelling. One addition will be located 14 feet from the rear property line. The required yard, rear yard setback is 40 feet. Relief of 26 feet is requested. Lot size is .28 acres. Dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, Section 207, nonconforming lots of record, building setback requirements. Section 907, our standards of relief. The owner of the property is Catherine Martin and Lucas Hearn, for the premises located at 708 South Road, South Kingston, Assessors Map 47-3, Lot 28, and is zoned R40. For this application, we have the application signed and dated July 14, 2021, with attachment. Owner authorization signed and notarized June 14, 2021. Proposed addition, A100 and A200 drawings, dated June 28, 2021. And then existing and proposed site plan, which are two pages. The 200-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. Good evening.
Hello. Thank you. So?
State your name and spell it, please.
My name's Lucas Hearn. Last name is H-E-A-R-N-E.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
So go ahead. What would you like to do?
Okay. So in these plans and in our, yeah, in this paperwork and our hardship, we express that our family is growing, and we would like to propose this addition on our property to suit those needs. Both of these additions, the, on the rear of the property, on this, the existing nonconforming lot, is where we're requesting relief. And basically, what we're trying to do with the property is, it is cleared for three bedrooms, and what we're trying to do within these perimeters is try and reconfigure the bedrooms that we have to make larger space for the living of our family. So we now have two kids, and the, the three bedrooms that exist on the property, the master bedroom is quite large, the nursery is just that, it's pretty much just a small nursery. And they're located on the roadside of the property, and so with the, on the roadside of the property where we're looking to expand is where we would like to put a new master bedroom so that we can split the two existing bedrooms that are there into smaller bedrooms for our children. On the rear of the property where we're asking for the dimensional variance is that structure that kind of comes out of the, the main mass of what is existing there is our third bedroom. And it's just, for what exists now, we're trying to use that space a little bit differently so that we can configure all the bedrooms on the, on the roadside of the property. So that now, we, is a space that we use more as like an office. It's more suited as like an office for us now. So trying to reconfigure the property to have the three bedrooms here and use that square footage to supplement the master bedroom in the, in the place on the roadside is going to be kind of our plan in trying to change the footprint and also the layout of our house.
Sure. And so, really, it, I guess, is it as simple as just saying you're, you're making the house rectangular?
Yes. Yeah.
And your back corner right now, you're not building it any closer than it exists right now, the building?
So our back corner right now, if you look at the existing?
Mm-hmm.
That back corner, we will be extending out. There's already an existing deck there, and we will not be exceeding any further than that.
Okay. So there's not structure there, but there's, there's a deck there?
Yes, there's a deck there.
And then in the front, there's no building there, but in the front, do you need, you're not getting any closer in the front than the 15.3 that you're already?
Uh, no, we are not.
That's on that side.
No, we're not.
So, okay. And then the other, and so it's just that, that one south side is the only place you're going to be adding?
Yes, that south, that south rear corner. And our property is, our rear property line is that diagonal, and so that's where we run into the, the 40-foot dimensional variance that we're asking for, and?
Oh, okay. And the garden is, who's the garden? Is that your garden?
It is our garden. When we, the, the stone wall was where we had kind of envisioned that our property line was when we moved in. And having very, I guess gracious neighbors and, and having a close relationship with them, being on the other side of that wall didn't seem to bother them at all, putting that garden in there was.
So, and they're obviously familiar with the fact that you're planning on putting this on?
Yes, they're very familiar, and they've been very supportive.
And they haven't had any issue?
No, not at all. They're, both the neighbors behind us, they're actually quite a ways behind us, and both of them are very excited for our plans and our family, you know, growing and, and staying around, for sure.
You just have to keep giving them vegetables, I would assume.
Yeah, exactly.
Lot of zucchini.
Lot of zucchini. Okay. Board members, any other questions for the applicant?
Just, just one, Mr. Chairman. Basically?
Yep.
Basically, you're using the space of the existing deck to?
Yes.
That's?
Yeah, that's basically it.
Okay.
Ms. Walsh?
I just had a question about the construction.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's a pretty busy road.
Yes.
And how, I mean, are you making any arrangements? You've got a big drive, you're, you're going to have, I forget the questions my colleagues ask about the turnaround?
Just, yeah, to make sure you have good egress coming from the building.
For the construction, or?
Yeah, so we do have, we, we have a good amount of room in the front yard, and on the other side of the property, there's some space. The, if you look at the, either of the plans where the walkway is, this is, it's just a wood walkway that, you know, we could get out of there or honestly try and plan on reconfigure our walk to our, our side. It's like our carport entrance there. So all of the existing space on the north and on the street side, as well as, I mean, with permission, there's, there's a lot of room on our, on the other side of the stone wall where?
Working with a company?
Yes, I'm working with, this is my friend here, my friend here, who's going to be helping me with the build, VanDexter Construction. So, yeah, we're looking to start, you know, just figure out the foundational elements of the build and everything, and just looking for the dimensional variance now so we can continue the process.
Still one floor?
Yes, still one floor.
No changes to the, the septic system?
Nope, no changes.
And your well, it was well-water?
Yes, it is well-water, and it, that's just about halfway between the corner of the deck and the, and the garden.
Okay.
So that's in the backyard, yeah.
Ah, I see it. Yep. Any other questions, board members?
Yeah.
Good. Mr. Rosen?
To the south of that stone wall, there's a, what looks like a driveway that goes back to the property behind you.
Yes.
Is that a private driveway?
It is. There are two houses back there. It's the Scher's and the Olsons that are back there. And that is their private drive. It's a dirt road. It winds back and splits at, right at the Olsons, the front of the Olsons property.
And when you're in the process of construction, you're going to have to have the construction workers park someplace. They obviously can't park on South Road. Have you got permission from the, the owners behind you to, for the construction workers to park in that driveway?
So like I, like I had stated before, both of our neighbors, the Scher's and the Olsons are, have been part of the conversation and are very excited to see us do this build. The, the Scher's have three kids, and now we have two kids. The Olsons are, at this point, kind of missing their kids, having them around, and they're more than happy to have our little neighborhood be having the young ones around. And this project has been exciting for all three of our families to look forward to. So I, I don't see any problem with trying to come to an agreement with something like that with, with our neighbors, yeah.
And so you're expanding the footprint of the house so that the deck on the south, what's that, the southeastern side? No, southwestern side of the house is expanded, but it's not going to be any closer to the property line in there. What's this parcel one deed that takes up the front square that you're going to add?
The front, on the roadside?
The what? I'm sorry.
You're asking on the roadside? Like?
On the front, yeah. On the front, south side.
Okay, yeah. Right. Yeah, so that, that area is going to be where we will be moving our master bedroom to.
That's where the?
What does parcel one deed mean on?
So I, I, I came up with this sketch from the surveyor's map. So the parcel one deed was text that was left on his map.
That's not relevant to your?
No, that's nothing that I've added. That's just from the surveyor's existing map.
Bill, just to clarify that, sometimes, in this case, he has one lot, but sometimes when the lot is conveyed, the deed description might be decades old or older centuries even, and the deed might, might be, the land might be legally described with reference to several parcels. At this point, it's one lot, so that's all, we, we don't really need to be concerned about that.
By combining several, yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, I visited out there, and I actually drove down that driveway. I didn't realize it was private or, or not.
Did he chase you out?
Well, he kind of did chase me out. Somebody was working back there, but he saw that I was quickly turning around, so.
Well, yeah, they're friendly people. I'm sure he was just splitting some cherry that he just took down the other day.
No, it was fine.
Yeah.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? No? Okay. Do you want to say anything against or speak for anything? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you.
So any thoughts to this, concerns? Seems extremely reasonable, practical. So?
You want me to try?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
It may be pain, I'm sorry, it may be painful.
Just bring the mic closer to you so we can hear you a little better.
I'm going to summarize, so, and I've never really done it, so you may have to sit a couple more minutes.
You have the cheat sheet, correct?
I do have the cheat sheet.
Okay, great.
Okay, this is a motion, I'd like to approve the application. The motion was made by Mr. Lucas Hearn of 708 South Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island, at the meeting held on August 18, 2021. The following individual, Mr. Hearn, spoke as the representative of the, as the applicant. And no one spoke, no one was at the meeting to speak in favor or oppose to this request. The following materials were entered into the record, and I think we already have those, Mr. Chairman, or do I have to read them all again?
Nope, you do not. We, we already read them.
And, now, do we need to vote before I say the rest?
You go through and just explain what?
Okay.
Why?
The Board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to, I just want to make sure, the unique characteristics of the subject land. Am I in the right cheat sheet?
Mm-hmm.
The subject land or structure, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and not due to a physical, economic disability of the applicant, excepting those physical disabilities addressed in Section 4524-3016. The Board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain, because the applicant is primarily seeking to increase the size of his house to accommodate a growing family. The Board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. In fact, the design appears to take into account by squaring off the land that the variance is the minimum necessary. The Board finds that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. And the Board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience because the applicant might have to move his family, and it sounds like they're in a situation in a good neighborhood for all concerned. And it also appears that the neighbors are supportive of the expansion of the house in character with the neighborhood.
You're good? Yeah?
Do you want me to say more?
You could just finish it by saying you wanted to make a motion.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve this application.
Excellent. No, good job. Motion is made. Can I get a second?
I will second the very fine motion of my colleague, Ms. Walsh.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
And you?
Aye.
Mr. Jurzak? Mr. Cagnetta? Mr. Mr. Gerzak, Mr. Cagnetta, aye. Motion passes, good luck. I, my cheat sheet went away. Yeah, I know, um, okay. So, uh, the only other foolish, uh, the only thing that we have left is, um, well, two things. One is the minutes, uh, from Wednesday, July twenty-first, 2021, uh, could someone make a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval.
Okay, by Mr. Rosen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Um, and then next is a roll call? Oh, uh, Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
First, and then, uh, Ms. Walsh seconded, is that right, the minutes?
No, I didn't.
Oh.
No, Mr. Daniels seconded.
You, Mr. Daniels seconded, that guy.
It's hard to distinguish us sometimes.
Really is, you guys all sound alike. Um, okay, and then we're all in favor. Um, and then, uh, roll call for next month, right? Um, because, who's not here?
Well, I don't know if Casey's gonna be here next month, my understanding is Casey will be here.
Casey will be here?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And the understanding was you might not be?
No.
You are not here. One more meeting.
I'm here in September.
Okay, so there might be six of us.
Do we, do we know if anybody's gonna be, uh, not available in October that's here?
What's the date of the next meeting? October?
September.
Yeah. Well, no, he's, he's asking about October twentieth to see, because it might be just us five for a little bit.
I was asking, the next one is September.
In October, I will.
The next meeting is September twenty-first.
No, twenty-second.
So you won't be available mid-October?
What day is it? In, in the October date is the twenty?
September, should be September fifteenth, right?
September fifteenth.
September fifteenth.
The third Wednesday.
September. Yeah, and I'm gonna be in Anchorage, and I guess we're not gonna be zooming, there was no.
No.
Which, which one? The September one?
October, I'm here in September.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm thinking about calling that, um, and I could probably be here in October, but who'd you have left? So I'm gonna consult with, uh, Jim, Jessica, too.
Yeah.
And, and if it would make it easier for your travel plans, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, if it would make it easier for your travel plans, potentially, that meeting could be moved to the twenty-seventh, the fourth, Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm supposed to be back on the twenty.
Okay.
This has to do with a COVID date, my mom was pregnant, that, you know, so we all know you gotta time.
Well, if, if you're gonna travel, it might be better for you to come, for us to do it the week after, just in case.
I don't wanna change negative convenience.
Well, no, I, well.
I think we're still within the window of time, nothing for October has been advertised yet, so yeah, let's just follow up with Jess, uh, next week when she's back.
I'll check with her, because I can be back like the twenty, twenty-first, if I can change my flight, if necessary, come back and maybe.
Thank you.
On the other hand, that does discount your flying today.
Well, that, that's, yeah.
I could be in Chicago that day.
Be more snow in Chicago. But we'll, we'll check in, and, and make sure.
Yeah, but the next week I'll be here for sure.
Okay. Anything else to go through? Nope? Okay, uh, eight-thirty, motion to close the meeting?
Great, I can make it home for the program I'm watching.
Uh, sorry, is that, is that you, Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It was nice to see you face the mask.
I, I think it's all, it's all the recording itself, everyone, because the last one, we got a late on that morning.
But two more, three, so it's two, fifty percent. Not one fifty, fifty percent of the increase of, of the existing four plan, not one fifty. Two or three, yes, two or three. I don't have that in my.